The December 10, 2019, regular meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Mr. Wilson, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Briner?
Here.
Mr. Buckley?
Here.
Ms. Jisling?
Present.
Mrs. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Tuttle?
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to welcome everyone to the December 10, 2019, regular meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the district's paperless Board of Education Agenda System, Board Docs. The public can access the agenda through the school district's website. The agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing this Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the superintendent and chief financial officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda when the board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it is an item on the agenda or another issue. When addressing the board, please state your name. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please address questions to the president. This meeting is being televised on a delayed basis, will be shown on Spectrum Cable, Channel 1026 at Mentor and Channel 1025, Mentor-on-the-Lake. This meeting is also being videotaped and will be shown on our YouTube channel, Cardinal TV, Mentor Ohio. Please place your mobile telephones on silent mode during the meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes. Next on the agenda, a hearing of the public on agenda items only. Anyone? Having none. Mr. Porter, superintendent's report and recommendations.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. I have the following recommendations listed under the consent agenda, and I recommend approval of items 5A1 through 5A3.
So moved.
Second?
Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the board, I would like to invite Mr. Casala and Mrs. Roberts to the podium to recognize the outstanding achievement of our girls rugby team.
I would love to.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Porter and Mr. Wilson. It's my pleasure to introduce members of our girls rugby program as they've joined us as a club sport this past school year. So I'd like to ask Coach Vicki McGary to join me up here as well, please. So the Mentor-Girls Rugby Club kicked off a little less than a year ago with 11 players ready to give this varsity sport a try. In just two weeks, our numbers grew to an impressive 24 girls rostered and many playing a sport they had never heard of, let alone how to play. They were placed in Rugby Ohio's Open Division and started our season off with three impressive wins and gains each week. This past fall, 27 girls came out to play in the offseason of high school sevens for the first time in Mentor history, were able to field three solid teams, two social and one competitive. Our competitive team went into each weekend ready for the matches, which resulted in a second-place seeding going into the state championships of high school sevens. We defeated Perrysburg in the semifinal match and went to the final match feeling very confident in our play. We started the final match with two quick scores, putting Brunswick on their heels. However, the undefeated veteran team of Brunswick did not waver, and they played flawlessly in the second half to earn the victory. Mentor High Rugby Team brought home a state championship runner-up title, as well as having one of their teammates, Mackenzie Greedance, nominated for All-Tournament Player. So I'd like to bring up the girls here to receive a certificate from the board. And ladies, as you come up, if you'd shake hands with the board and just stay standing at the other end of the podium until everybody has been recognized. Co-captain Emily Rahija. Congratulations. Co-captain Megan Freel?
Congratulations, Emily. Well done.
Very proud of you.
Thank you.
Can you do that without your pants?
Nothing.
Congratulations.
Avalina Strauss?
Outstanding.
Very proud of you.
Congratulations.
Emma Schilling? Hannah Salkas?
Very proud of you.
Great for you.
Congratulations.
Well done.
Congratulations.
Alyssa Hyman Lloyd?
Very proud of you.
Congratulations.
Great season.
Congratulations.
Mackenzie Greedance?
Very proud of that.
Erica Novak?
Well done.
Very proud of that.
Can I say anybody?
Congratulations.
Great season.
Congratulations to all of these young ladies.
Very proud of you.
Great job, Kelly.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Mr. President, members of the board, this time I would like to invite Mr. Crowe to join Mrs. Roberts at the podium to recognize three exceptional students who obtained perfect scores on the ACT test.
Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Porter and Mr. Wilson, I'm excited to be here this evening to recognize three Mentor High School seniors for their academic excellence as they each scored a perfect score on the ACT. Nearly 2 million students take the ACT each year, and of these test takers, only 0.195% earned a perfect score. So this puts our students among the most elite students globally that take the ACT. So as I announce these students, please feel free to applaud each of these on their amazing accomplishment. And as they come up, just so you know, they're dressed for, or a couple of them are dressed for an orchestra concert because, like most of our, you know, higher academic, like all students, but especially our high academic students, they're involved in so many different things. So first, Sarah Ramaya.
Well done.
Very proud of you.
And Sam Webster.
Well done.
Very proud of you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
So impressive, Sam.
Well done.
Well done.
Very proud of you.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations again to Sarah, James, and Sam.
hall.
Mr. President, members of the board, it is an honor tonight to recognize Coach Steve Trivissano, who has been a leader in our district and community for many years. Aside from the head coach's role, Steve has also been a proud graduate, teacher, and parent and mentor. Needless to say, he knows Mentor schools very well throughout those, through those many lenses. But he is most widely known as our head football coach the past 23 years. And while many outside of our community will remember the big games and the memorable victories and the legendary athletes he coached, whose names continue to make us proud, those of us on the inside have come to know and triv as much more than the guy who engineered the football success. Senior Luke Floria said it best when he was quoted, "Coach changed my life. He changed everyone's life who played for him. I love that man. I'm going to miss him." High school boys don't talk like that about someone unless that someone has transformed and inspired them in some profound way. Truth is, Luke's words speak for the hundreds and probably now thousands of young men and a few young women who triv has coached. Those on the inside know he made his players better people, better citizens, and even imparted wisdom about how to be good sons, husbands, and fathers. He also modeled how to give back to the community. Those are the biggest takeaways from Coach's time here, and that's what we will miss. But you have left many behind who have learned from you, and they will pass it on. So your impact will truly last forever. Our videographer, Liz Radkowski, produced a 10-minute video tribute to Coach that I think really captures what triv has meant to our district.
Liz made an incredible video.
Coach, you are being awarded a Crystal Cardinal, which is not easy to get because of the impact you have had and will continue to have on Mentor schools. On behalf of the Board of Education, we invite you to come up. Congratulations.
Sit down. Sit down. Thank you. It's been very humbling and rewarding the last few days. Now, it didn't end the way we wanted it to end, but like we talked to the kids, life doesn't always work out the way you want it. You've got to learn how to take the good and the bad, and I couldn't be more proud of where our kids have come and what they've done. We work hard to build a culture, a culture of hard work and discipline and understanding the good and the bad, the ups and the downs, handling themselves the good way even when people are trying to say or criticize or whatever. They just keep battling. They do it the right way in the classroom. We'll brag, we had the number-one kid in the senior classes, a football player. So imagine that, a three-sport athlete who's the number-one kid in the class. He's way smarter than I am. I'll tell you that much. But our kids have done it the right way, and they've done it with pride, and they've done it with effort, they've done it with enthusiasm, and they care about their school, and they care about where they're from, and I couldn't be more proud to be the leader of it. Couldn't be more proud to have the opportunity to go here from when I went to, we talked about this, I went to Brentmore. Remember when they were closing schools, they were adding when I was there. Now, that's how old I am. We went from Brentmore to Rice, to Bellflower, to Ridge, to Mentor High. Amazingly enough, in the words of some of my teachers, I can't believe he made it. But, yeah, he did, and I couldn't thank for everything everybody's given me throughout my career, my years of growing up here and being a part of it. It's been my honor, it's been my privilege to have served this school, not only as the football coach, but as a teacher and a parent and all that. And I thank you, and I guess this is my final day, I bid you farewell. May, we would be planning schedules and asking for resource teachers. We used to fight over you. And I finally, it was my turn, and then you went to the junior high. Yeah. Secondly, during financial crisis, my favorite memory of you is when you led that rally and spoke to the community and got them prideful, and they made the right decisions and got us out of fiscal emergency. So personally and from the community, you certainly deserve our thanks.
Give one final round of applause for Coach.
We'll take one more break. For those who would like to leave, students, go do some work, study, hit the books.
Go tackle someone, girls.
Mr. President and members of the board, I am recommending approval of agenda item C1 related to certified personnel and C2 through C5, all related to human resource matters.
So moved.
Second?
Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Thank you. This concludes my portion of tonight's agenda.
Next on the agenda, Mr. Wilson? Yes, it's that time of year where we need to look forward to reorganizing statutorily in the state of Ohio. The board must reorganize every calendar year, and to do so, we first need a presiding officer over the organizational meeting. So we're recommending, does not take a motion or a second, but recommend someone be appointed to preside over the organizational meeting until a new president's elected.
Nominate Ken.
Second?
Call the roll?
Oh, we don't need to.
We don't need to.
Yeah, all right. So Tom will preside.
Wait, me? Oh, who was it?
Ken. Ken, I'm sorry. I missed her. All right, Ken. I apologize. I did not hear that correctly.
Sorry.
Oh, that was me. Next, recommend the Board of Education set the meeting date for the organizational meeting, the tax budget hearing, and the first regular meeting for January. We're proposing January 14, and this one will take a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
All right, and next, recommending that you authorize a public auction to dispose of used equipment, primarily student MacBooks, which is part of our funding strategy to sustain our instructional technology program. Ohio Revised Code requires that when the cumulative value exceeds $10,000, we provide proper public notice and conduct an auction. We will do so with the assistance of an online auction firm, but this again will allow us to proceed and use the proceeds to help fund next year's purchase.
So moved.
Second?
Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
And we do have an addendum item tonight. We also determined that we have miscellaneous old technology no longer being used by the district. We originally believed the cumulative value was less than $10,000 just this week, and working with our online sales company that will conduct the auction, they're saying current market values will allow us to receive over $10,000. So I'm asking that we authorize a second public auction for used technology, which includes network switches, wireless access points, desktop laptops and servers, computer monitors, some old printers, and some old smart boards with their projectors.
So moved.
Second?
Please call the roll?
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Legislative report.
Next on the agenda, legislative report. Mrs. Briner?
Okay, the hot topic is the school vouchers. Seems to be that the eligibility of schools has ballooned in the last 15 months. Of course, this is also known as the Ed Choice Scholarship Program, provides public tax dollars for students assigned to persistently low-rated buildings to attend private schools. Within the last 15 months, the program grew from 238 buildings to an estimated 1,227 buildings. That's more than one-third of Ohio's public school buildings, and nearly three-fourths of all school districts have a building that is voucher-eligible. Also, buildings on the eligibility list for the 2020-2021 school year, nearly one-half of those buildings received an overall grade of A, B, or C on the current state report card. A couple of the factors that have contributed to this growth, expiration of the three-year safe harbor, creation of the new voucher eligibility criteria, and implementation of overall letter grades. Of course, OSBA, OASBO, and BASSA have had called action to contact our legislators, ask for changes be made prior to the next voucher application date of February 1st.
I called Senator Lehner's office, but she did not recall or call me back, and I'm happy to report that our Senator Kenny Ugo is definitely concerned about this and supports the changes that OSBA has suggested.
Good. Thank you, Ginny. There was recently a territory transfer law that was enacted that alters the way school district territory transfers are governed, that's causing issues. And this has caught the ire of Representative Don Jones from Freeport and Peggy Lehner from Kettering. The law was enacted as part of a two-year state budget bill, House Bill 166. It would permit specified individuals who reside in a township that contains the territory of two or more school districts to petition to transfer their territory to an adjoining school district. The law sidelines the current checks and balances for transfer requests and prevents the State Board of Education from disapproving a request to transfer. At a meeting of the State Board of Education, Representative Jones stated, "My problem with it is this, it's not for the benefit of students, it's for the benefit of property owners. It's not about the kids going to the school, it's about what their property is worth." Senator Lehner advised, she feels that the process is just out of control. This needs to get fixed, I'll do what I can to fix it via legislation. Currently, there are no bills pending that would repeal or revise the law. Meanwhile, in Plain Local, which is Stark County, they filed a lawsuit challenging the state law amid two separate efforts by residents to transfer territory to an adjacent school district. A study committee created by House Bill 166 to study recommendations on revising the state report card is nearing the release of its report. There was a 10-member committee, which consisted of three superintendents, held three meetings, heard testimony from several groups that recommended changes to the report card. The superintendents include Stephanie Starcher from Fort Fry Local in Washington, Marlin Stiles of Middletown City, and Cameron Reiva of Strongsville City. They're expected to issue their recommendations by December 15. And some recently introduced legislation. House Bill 409, introduced by Rep. J. Kyle Kohler from Springfield, would modify student attendance requirements at certain e-schools. House Bill 410, introduced by Reps. Bride Rose Sweeney from Cleveland, and Nairaj Jay Antani from Miami's Berg, would exempt from sales and use tax textbooks purchased by post-secondary students. House Bill 436, introduced by Rep. Brian Baldridge of Winchester, would require professional development for screening and intervention for children with dyslexia, to require school districts establish structured literacy certification procedures, and require districts to employ specified ratios of structured literacy-certified teachers. House Bill 437, introduced by Reps. Doug Green of Mount Orab and John M. Rogers of here in Mentor-on-the-Lake, would permit an enhanced homestead exemption of 50,000 for surviving spouses of uniformed service members who die in the line of duty or whose death is otherwise service-connected. House Bill 439, introduced by Rep. Jason Stevens from Kits Hill, would adjust for inflation, the 25,000 homestead exemption, and the enhanced homestead exemption for disabled veterans. Senate Bill 244, introduced by Senator Michael A. Rulie from Salem, to require fiscal officers of school districts, among other political subdivisions, to provide certificates of transition to their successors when leaving office. Senate Bill 248, introduced by Senator Tim Schaefer, would extend until November 30 of 2022, the moratorium on the requirement for storm shelters to be constructed for new school construction projects. And Senate Bill 249, introduced by Senator Peggy Lehner from Kettering, would require public buildings to have at least one restroom facility with an adult-changing station and to authorize an income tax credit for installation of such station. That's all I have.
If I may just add two things, the territory transfer issue that you identified is, affects two districts right now, Hills and Dales and Stark County, as you mentioned, and also Indian Hills down in the Cincinnati area. This is coupled with an attempt by Hunting Valley to cap the amount of property taxes homeowners would pay in a thing. That happened to be vetoed by the governor as he signed a state budget bill. But we're seeing increasing attempts at a different type of voucher approach, something that enables parents to self-select the school of education with some significant financial impact on the current school district. So I connect this a little bit with the Ed Choice initiative that we've been talking about a lot, and I think it's causing concern to enable districts to self-select who they want to merge with or partner, as well as this notion of capping property tax amounts for an individual household. I would also say, I know the board's indicated a desire to get more engaged legislatively. You'll recall back in 2016, we adopted a legislative position to encourage an expansion of the homestead exemption for senior citizens and to mean-test it. So I think there's an opportunity for us to engage particularly with Representative Rogers up here, but also Representative Stevens and Green, to encourage them to perhaps consider our proposal that would enhance even more for senior citizens, the need for some recognition of financial strain on them, means-tested, so it's for those that most need the support, enable them to stay in their homes and still vote their value of quality education. So I'm hopeful this may be two opportunities for the board to engage legislatively to encourage that, and I've got the resolutions from prior communications if any of the board members are so inclined.
Dan, do you know if we've had any discussion with John Rogers about that?
We did initially back in 2016, and he was receptive to it, but again, looking for the right opportunity to advocate for it.
Yeah, I agree. I think this would be good timing, considering this House bill.
Yes.
Along the same lines.
Yes.
So we may want to try to meet with him after the 1st of the year.
Okay, I'll work with you to see if we can facilitate that.
Also, if I may mention, on the Ed Choice, besides the Ohio School Board Association and some of the other professional associations are working together to try to create and craft some emergency legislation that will fairly, that would allow the state to fairly assess which school should remain on that Ed Choice list. So I think this is going to continue to be, you know, an active issue. So I think we need to stay tuned and we'll keep you apprised of that.
Especially with everything we know about measuring student learning and basing instruction on data, one test is driving the results of this. It's just, it's wrong.
Well, at the same time that they're trying to, they've enacted this legislation, there's also an overhaul of the state report card.
Exactly.
Which doesn't match up.
Right.
So it'll be interesting to see how this becomes reconciled. So it'll be interesting to see how this becomes reconciled.
If you need someone to testify, be happy to go.
There you go. I think you'd be good for that, Ken.
Excellent, excellent choice.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, chief financial officers' report recommendations. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you. I recommend approval of Agenda Items 7A, 7B, 7C, and 7D as presented.
So moved.
Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Jizling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Next, I recommend the Board of Education approve Exhibit 7-E, the approval of the resolution to recertify tax rates for tax year 2019, which will be collected in calendar year 2020.
So moved.
Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jizling?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
That completes my items.
Next on the agenda, any unfinished business to discuss?
Yes. I propose we set a date for a work session after the holidays, maybe. We had talked about the information that Dan had sent us regarding the Board's self-evaluation, and also to get some preliminary information regarding Levy. Was there anything else we had talked about previously that we want to add on that agenda?
No, just that I noticed from the feedback from the consultant from the Board of Education Association, she had an hour presentation that might enhance the self-evaluation process. Would we want to consider that as part of the meeting, or do it separately?
You mean have someone from OSBA come? And do, I don't know, does anybody feel the need for that, or do we think we can manage on our own? I honestly haven't had a chance to look at that in detail.
Yeah. The focus was on student achievement. I'm not sure if that was our intent, our intent mainly was evaluating our procedures and processes as a board.
Kind of revisiting things from the last time, too.
And when I talked to OSBA, I told them that the primary purpose was that self-assessment of how the Board functions as a Board and to do those things you want, and I think she sent out a checklist of talking areas to, for the Board to self-critique on those. And then secondarily, if the Board was so inclined to talk about a high-level overview of school district performance and if there's certain data requests or needs there, but you don't have to do both. And again, whether it's facilitated or done amongst the Board, if we want to have it facilitated, I'll need to sync updates. The Board's available with OSBA to ensure that we can make it happen.
How about if we attempt to do it on our own with that check sheet, and then if we feel we need a follow-up with someone from OSBA? How's everybody feel about that? Then we can schedule that later. Does that sound good?
And we might even have some additional, like specialized areas that are specific that we wanted to have.
Maybe target.
A focus, right, because we have that wonderful broad presentation that she did for us.
Yes.
And that might be a good starting point, and then kind of see where we're at. I think that's a good idea.
One other thing that I think we might want to add is with upcoming negotiations, do we want Dan to pull some information and start discussing some things on that?
Yes.
Okay. Dan, can we add that to the list?
Yes, and we would do that in executive session.
Is there anything else we can think of? Okay. Can we look at our calendars for January?
Maybe Saturday, the 11th? If we wanted to do it on Saturday, I think that's.
I'm good on Saturday. How does everybody feel about that? It's Saturday morning.
I'm okay, but let me.
But not too early.
That's my birthday, I'll bring cake.
Oh, right. You can't do the 11th, that's no good.
Yes, we can.
What about the 18th?
Fourth or the 18th?
We can do the 11th.
I know, you're so good. I mean, 4th is good for me, and the 18th is good for me also.
I'm good any date.
Except the 20th. No, I'm good. So do we have a birthday meeting or a non-birthday meeting? 11th or the 18th? Stan's call. Any special plans, Dan?
Not yet, other than to take advantage of the Board's generous support of me, my Christmas gift.
Is that good for everybody? 9:00, 9:30?
And we're doing, on Dan's birthday?
January 11th.
Okay. We can do it at like 6:00 AM?
7:30.
Oh, God, no.
Okay, what time would be best for everybody?
I propose 9:00 or 9:30.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Thanks, Ken.
The day is half over, my friends.
You can be here at 6:30 if you want. Okay.
Mrs. Roberts?
January 11th at 9:30.
If you get there at 6:30, you'll be all hot and delicious.
It's a deal, it's a deal.
Excellent.
Hearing of the public? Anyone? Non-agenda items? Or anything you want to talk about, Greg? Okay. Moving on, no executive session? We have motion for adjourn?
So moved.
Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jizling?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes. Yes.
Meeting's adjourned.